I'll follow this work session to order. Our regular scheduled council meeting will begin at 6:30. This item will here from most of our heads are here, our councils, those who are with you down.
What I got this. Dr. Green? Good to be there tonight. Good seeing you. We're trying to continue the details. We've recently gotten in another notice from our lawyers in opioid litigation. There's been a substantial settlement from several of the manufacturing defendants, including Purdue, who have been in bankruptcy. As a result of that, we'll be getting another. I don't know if it's kind of, I think it's going to come in 10 separate increments if I read the memo right. But we'll be getting in some more opioid money to be used in the council's discretion. We haven't had one in quite a while, so this is certainly good news. They're dwindling down. I don't know. There are probably less than 10 manufacturing defendants left to settle. But all of the defendants have settled, including those who have declared bankruptcy over this. So that's certainly good news. I don't know how much we're getting in yet. The memo didn't say, but we should be learning that pretty soon, I would say. So our council needs to be thinking about how they want to use those monies. And I don't know to what extent they're still held in reserve. Also, we've been in some litigation with Lake Stone Development that I'm working to get. Their lawyers have agreed to turn over their CD balance, which is roughly $43,000. We're both named on, both CD and Lake Stone were named on the CD. We're having to jump through hoops. I'm trying to get the bank to release the money to us. So hopefully that will be done. First of all, right now, that's our only pending litigation. The, well, if there's anything else that the council has any questions of, that's those are the two things I want to report on. I don't got any questions. We'll ask Allison.
Allison? No, sir, not tonight.
Really?
I just wanted to address, I was asked this week why the city doesn't buy coffee for employees. And I just wanted to make everybody aware of the reason. The AG Attorney General has issued several opinions on the subject. A lot of times Attorney General opinions are pretty gray, but this one says "A municipality cannot purchase coffee for its employees or visitors." So it's pretty straightforward. That was AG opinion 1981 through 34. And since then, people have asked in different ways, "Okay, but if we're having a party, can we?" If we're doing this, and they repeatedly said no. So I think it's a ridiculous rule, but unfortunately, there's a lot of ridiculous rules that come from the state that we have to follow. So I just want to make sure everybody was aware of that.
We had one item on the agenda, but we're going to remove it. We were going to recognize Larry Cox and his retirement, but he's, has a sick family member, so he won't be here tonight. We'll do that at a later date. Yeah, this week, we're hosting training at our PD for Mental Health Liaison. Most of y'all are familiar with our Shelby County Mental Health Liaison. So we're going to host a couple of other neighboring agencies, and he's going to come in and give a briefing on capabilities and future growth. I think they plan on growing that program, which is great. And I know y'all, I've told you before, we hit the ground running using him right off the bat. So we're real excited about that. It's very much needed because we deal with mental health issues almost every day. And then this Friday, we're hosting investigating child deaths with our corner, Lyanna Evans. She's going to put the training on, and we're hosting it here. We'll have some of our folks in that training as well for investigating infant deaths, the specialty. She's a really renowned expert on that. We're lucky to have her here as our corner. That's about all I got.
No, sorry, thank you. What's on the agenda? Uh, just what's on the agenda. I think I got my thing. Just what's on the agenda?
Thank you. This is my microphone. Can you hear me? Uh, first of all, Bill, can you give us the status of, a status update on the new hotels that are under construction?
No, let's say, I have no idea whether they're in construction. Reggie, probably a better idea than that. The home, excuse me, the home to suites, they were saying, last time I talked to Jeff, the superintendent was hoping to be at the end of this month, but it might be the first of October before they open up completely. We're starting to do some finals on some of the floors. The Holiday Inn, they're looking at end of the year is what they're shooting for. They had a slow start. They got another superintendent, I think, in there and, or a couple more to try to help out and get things rolling. So they're still, I think, looking for the first year. And Comfort Inn, they have not programmed yet or done anything, so.
We hadn't heard anything back from them?
I don't know what their.
They got some infrastructure in the ground.
Yeah, they got a little bit of stuff going for this.
They got some storm sewer room, that's about it.
Yeah.
Not a lot.
Yeah, sometimes they'll have one going somewhere that might get delayed, and their crews are going to wait and go on the air. But I don't know if that's, because I haven't talked to anybody, so I don't know if that's the reason or not.
Okay. Just keep us informed. We're anxious for those hotels to help us with revenue, tax revenue off the interstate. All right, um, this is a question also for either you, Bill, or Reggie. The site work underway adjacent to the tire engineer that expresses oil change business. What is that business going to be? What is that supposed to be prepared for?
Graves Automotive. Graves, obviously, it's Grace, not Graves with a V. It's Gray.
Gray?
Gray.
G R A Y?
EY. Is it AY or?
One of them.
AY. We'll go AY.
Okay, sorry.
They got one in Clint.
Yeah, they got one in Clint.
They got one in Clint. Okay, what is that? Is that an oil change business?
A little small car. Like minor repair.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, nice. Helped by Coast Guard Department. Okay, and also our attorney, we need to update on the dumpster pad and railroad, railroad D Smith. Now, we were expecting something from, from the bill board. Did he give you the details?
He's returned it to CSX. There was a couple of minor changes to it. If you ever negotiate with the railroad, you'll know that it just seems like it takes forever to finalize. But as I understand it, it's in the final stages and he delivered it to the CSX lawyer last week.
Okay.
And I've looked, I've looked at it, and it looks like the minor changes have been made. Will be acceptable to CSX, but maybe never know for sure until they sign and got it by.
Okay, well, we look forward to getting that complete information going forward. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one thing. I was going to ask Roger, you and I talked about the ADA parking at the big parking lot behind the bar station. And you said it would be about $3,000. So we need, as a council, we need to decide if we got $3,000 to meet that parking lot ADA compliant. And is that work that we could do?
We can do some of it. The demo's out of it.
So that's what we need to get, to get to decide what we can do with that.
I guess the council would have to make a decision. Kelly, you send the reference there for the ADA parking lot.
Yeah, we definitely, our revenue are expanding, especially if you approve these budget adjustments. We haven't significant revenue or expense right now.
How quick can that get done, Roger?
We can start Monday.
But then this budget, I think it would be better than this budget cycle, what Kelly said. Council will have to make the decision. That's certain.
Yes, I got one item that James is going to pull up and put on the screen or main screen. This area here that she's looking at is the development. That's, that's the bank 50C in the upper part there. And when you walk down the alleyway to the right side of it, that's what the bank is looking to do. Behind the old pizza place, this area now. And so that's a great look that I see coming. They've done a great job even to this moment. So what they're going to do is you go up those steps, and you go up to the top of the building. You'll have a view off the top of the building and look back at the behavior of whatever is there. So you also, if you'll look at that, that design till you left, you'll see some flowers, flower bed, and you'll see an outdoor fireplace there. So that'll be built by, the bank is looking at doing all of this work to enhance that area where they're building. Their ask of us is, is if, can you move it to the next little picture, can I close? Okay, so that, that is directly behind the ice cream shop that you're looking at there. So they're asking for us to be able to see if we could put a sidewalk right there in that picture and all the way out to 17 behind the Cosby building. I know we've, we've mentioned this time after time, but I don't know that we have any money budgeting for that sidewalk. But that's a great landscape design, great sitting area for our, our citizens to be in and shop. So I'd like the council to take a look at when they're doing the budget, look at, let's, let's get a price for the sidewalk all the way out to 17. So whenever we do do something with the Cosby building and the church people, they can come out, and then they can walk down the sidewalk all the way down to the bank and out that view. That's a great look. I'm really proud to see that happening here. I'm looking forward to it, and hopefully we can financially help with this with the sidewalk. I'm seeing that sidewalk being that much of a problem. That, that, that looks really good. Also, I've had, over here, you see this, that's, that's going to be turf, the one on the bottom. That's going to be turf in that, over that concrete area for people to sit out on and then. That's right behind the ice cream shop. So that pretty well sums up what we've got going on there. But I wanted to take you to the other, other street behind the coffee shop up through there. I don't have the pictures of it, but they're, they're permitted to be doing a roof over the back of it that comes out 10 foot from every building. And then they'll have the back of it, it'll go up to the parapet wall, and then all the businesses that they're, that they're going to go on top of the parapet wall. What that parapet wall does is hides all the tops of the buildings. So that's going to be a big enhance. So when you walk around the alley and then you turn and go down behind the coffee shop and all those areas, that's really fixing the height. And so they're, they're really supposed to start doing some of the work toward the end of the week. They've already taken down the gutters. So the first step is to repair for the gutters, reinstall the gutters, and then start doing the footings. Every measurement comes off of the footing. So that's a great little part down. We've really achieved a lot down there this year. And I want to thank the council and the mayor for us being able to do that. That's all I have.
All right, Kevin?
Yes, thank you. Last council meeting, I think I brought up about the, something that's pertaining to the veterans. Since we met the last time, I got a chance to meet with some of the vets and kind of, you know, to get some ideas for us, a monument. Bill, were you able to find that information out of, about the flag?
I've got a contact, but I need to, if you've got a concept that you're interested, they want to know what it is, what it's going to look like, what the structure's going to look like, what the footprint's going to be, all that. So if you've got that, send it to me, and I'll, I'll send it over to you. And see what we have to do to, your approval.
And also I wanted to ask, Roger, I've had several truck drivers that have asked, "Do we have anywhere in the city where they could park their trucks like the different truckers have?"
You got the one across from Timberline, that gas station. Come up places like that.
Yeah, where they can park like overnight?
Yeah, you got the one that, across from Timberline, that gas station. Walmart's got a little section. Yeah, QT's got a little thing if you buy fuel. Really don't know anywhere else besides there.
But are those where, like if they park for more than overnight, like they get off for maybe two days or something of that nature? Because I think at QT, they.
I think, yeah, I don't know about QT. I see ones overnight over at the gas station across from Timberline, but I don't know what the rules are. Something like that.
I don't build a public place.
I don't, that I know.
They're probably holding. Lock it if somebody, somebody brought it.
Then I said that, I would ask, and also I wanted to achieve what we had talked about earlier. If you, you have any information.
You want to bring that up now, or when we're talking about the, or, you talking about the park orders? Yes, well, what, what Calvin was asking me about was firearm detection equipment. He, he thought that was something we should consider to make our football games primarily, I think he meant, safer. And we do have one device that you guys approved. We brought with a grant, and it is a firearms detection device, just like the ones they have at college football games. It's not a metal detector strictly. It detects firearms and large knives, and it, it can discern between, like it will go off for your keys and that sort of thing. So it's nice. It's cost about $18,000, is that right, Robbie? Twenty-two, uh, $22,000 is what the thing costs, and we've got one. Now, the problem, if we tried to use that at our ballgames now, would be you can run about 1,000 people an hour through. And, you know, we had a pretty big backup, from what I understand, Saturday, people getting in. So I don't think one would be adequate, if that's something that you guys wanted to do. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
We do have one of the devices. We'd be happy to bring it, show it to you. It's portable. But if you've been to any of the college football games, like if you ever go to Alabama, you see him pat McInnesdale down because he's always got a contraband on him. But that was a joke. But you go through them pretty fast. You can walk through them pretty fast, and then most, you know, most of the time, they don't beat like, like metal detectors. But of course, if any of them goes off, they have to go to secondary places and then the search further. But that is a possibility, and that's something that they've adopted, I believe, the Tuscaloosa City Schools have adopted. So several, several schools are doing that now in the area. We did have a discussion with our school board, and we showed them the device and made a presentation to them about capabilities of that device.
One of the reasons that we were talking about that was pertaining to the ordinance 20 dash, I mean, 25-45. And that could be a backup to also to enhance if we did that ordinance is passed tonight, pertaining to 14 and under. Do you think that that would be the access to you guys? If that was in place, and because if we're concerned, you know, refer to that ordinance of the danger or something happening, or do you feel that would help?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, if, if we have those in place, you're not going to be able to get a firearm in. And that's, that's going, there's going to be people on both sides of that. I mean, no doubt about it. You know, that's a sensitive issue in, in our state. But my fear is kids with guns. That's my fear is kids getting in there with guns. And you mentioned backpack, clear backpacks, things like, there's all kinds of things we could talk about and you guys can consider. But that's, you know, that, that is a viable option if that's what we want to do. Now, it is a state law. You can't have a firearm at a high school football game. So it's posted out there already, and the law's in place. So that's something we could do, but if we undertake that, there are going to be people that, that, you know, are going to be on both sides of that, there's no doubt about it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, a couple things. I wanted to start with Chief Derrick, our department. Two meetings ago, Attorney High asked me if I were able to send the letter to the contractor.
Yes, sir.
And I wanted to ask Sean if you had any success getting any of the huntless items correct.
Of the three main issues, two have been completed. The gutters up outside concrete. There's still some, a little bit of work on the inside foyer that needs to be done, but I think otherwise, we're, we're very close. And that's all been done since the last council, or since we talked about it last, that's correct. And I believe the gutter issue's been resolved. I was over there the other day when it was raining, and we didn't have the, the problem that we did before.
Pretty confident you're going to be able to get all that wrapped up for the whole.
I hope so.
Just one thing. I don't think that maybe, I'm with Kelly, maybe you can help with this. The money that's from, from the gas tax that's put in a special fund, I think the state, state of Alabama requires to do that.
We have to have several different bank accounts.
Pardon me?
We have to have several different bank accounts to hold a different type of gas.
Okay, I know we have that, some of that on here. I was listening for that tonight. But I was wondering, you know, this, that's some broad language in that that says, that I was reading that over, that says that money can be used only for maintenance improvement, replacement, and construction. So what I'm wondering about, does that, does that language mean that you could use that money to build a new road? If, if there's not one already existing, maybe, I don't know, Bill, maybe you may can answer that.
I think everything I've read, a new road is usually, I, I think that's covered under all the different taxes. But there's some of it you can use for equipment and some for the, it's very specific. Like there's a seven cent, the four tax, and different taxes have different usage. You know, there's, the Lake District Municipality's got a selective rating on it that I always refer back to. So when we're paying for it, I, I refer back to that to make sure it's in the usage. But I think, I'm pretty sure new roads, you can use it for any of those. But if you get into, we got into some great area before when I was at another municipality. If you're repaving a dirt road, we had to get our lawyers on the, I'll get some, you know, some specifics. But we try to make sure that whatever we're using it for is, is what's out front that we can use it for.
I, I know we followed your guidelines, what you, what you recommended, what you wrote was most important. That was next in line, but I just, it's a lot of sum of money. I was like, if there's, if we have, if we have little bearances, if it wasn't restricted, I guess what I'm saying, if it wasn't restricted, some of the things we seem like we could, that we need to do, it is in on, on roads or something that you, why can't that money be used by, instead of desperate? If we, if we had a little bit more leeway to use the money, if the law was stricter. After I saw, I guess when I saw, you know, I saw that, the, not just replacement, but the construction of streets, I just thought, that's a pretty open area there, so we, maybe use, use that money for something else.
Are you referring to some of the money that's being requested for like the grants in like the 2565 intersection?
Uh, no, I'm just speaking, I ain't on, on just the gas tax money. I guess that, what you, what they call it, rebuild Alabama?
Yeah, rebuild Alabama.
Rebuild Alabama money. Rebuild Alabama money.
Yeah, from what I've read, I, I haven't, I don't remember seeing the construction, but I, I know you stand to clear if it's resurfacing, doing maintenance on an existing road. Most of it is on improvements to existing infrastructure.
It's, it's written in, on, on this, uh, on resolution forty-three tonight, I, I, it's written in that headline there. It says, uh, uh, maintenance, improvement, replacement and construction of streets. That's why I just wondered. What did that construction give us the right to do?
I don't, I don't know that. I'd have to read into that a little bit more. I just took it to, I've, I've took it, the money to apply to existing, improvement of existing roads. Is what I've tried to stick with on that. I don't know what the guidelines are when you're talking about building. I'm sure there's some requirements on what you're building, from where to where, what type of road you're building.
But it has to be city, city roads, is, is it on the city streets, correct?
Don't know that either. I don't know, I don't know who that would turn over to if you used rebuild Alabama money to do that, don't know that.
Yes, this courage is just trying to find out what that, what that really meant. That's all I have, just a little bit on, on resolution forty-three.
Did you have something like, like you have before the meeting? What kind of future?
Hi, everyone. So the forum's tomorrow and I wanted to talk about that a little bit. I, um, have a copy of the program for each of you guys as well, so you can be familiar with tomorrow, um, with the Shelby Chamber and the Shelby's News Media, um, co-hosting this. We want to make sure everybody's aware of how the day's going to go. Um, so we're going to have an opening march by Pastor Ben Nelson of Collectivist Church, Collectivist Event Center. And then we'll have a pledge of allegiance and then, um, everybody will be introduced. First up will be our ten council candidates and each will have five minutes to speak. Um, it'll start in, um, alphabetical order. And then after the five minutes, each candidate will have three minutes for any additional comments or questions. After that, they will sit down and we'll start our mayor, um, forum, which will start in alphabetical order and rotate down the line per question. And again, I have that on here as well for you guys to see. Each of the mayor candidates will be asked questions, um, by the chamber, chamber representative and will, um, continue in the evening, for the evening in that manner. After everybody has answered all their questions, each candidate then will be given a chance of three minutes for any remaining comments, closing statements as well for that. Um, we're looking forward to having everybody tomorrow, um, the community to come out, hearing all of you guys speak and have a chance to say what you stand for, for Calera. And again, it's a great community event. I have these for you guys, if I can hand these to you, um, as well. And then I had a couple of other things, our normal Main Street events, um, continuing for this month, for Septen, um, for September. We have on the twentieth, our Coffee and Cars Cruisin'. So if you have a classic car, come bring it out, it's a great time. Or if you don't have a car, you want to come see all the classic cars, again, great time, bring those cars out, show them off on Main Street, enjoy the family. It's a laid back event, um, a lot of fun for the community. Then on the twenty-first is the Pavilion Party. And I say it that way because it's all, everything pet friendly. So all your furry animals, um, we will have pet adoptions there, low cost pet, um, vaccinations done by the Calera Animal Hospital. Will be available for the community as well at this event. So again, it's a great time, if you love pets, have a pet, want to just see some pets from a distance, again, come on out, it's a great time, okay? Give you guys each of these. Also, any candidates that are here that want a copy, please come see me at the end of the meeting.
I just drop off the headpiece, y'all start again?
No. You have that ten minutes before the meeting, so you're welcome.
Okay.
Thank you for, thank you for that.
Perfect! Just wanted to say thank you, uh, for all that y'all do for the high schools supporting us. So we just got you guys some shirts and all season sports baskets to be able to come to our games. Um, just at your convenience anytime you would like, so, um, just thank you. You are so welcome. Shouldn't put these in order, huh? And you know Connie, I can never leave you out because, you know, all things. So thank you guys so much, hope y'all see y'all at the Nest in two weeks. Um, it's going to be a great season, it's going to be a great school year. We appreciate y'all and all the support, um, that you give for us at the high school. So our doors are open, y'all know that, come see us whenever you can.
This is guaranteed not to shrink.
Correct, guaranteed not to shrink.
Thank you, dinner.
You're welcome.
It's a million.
Let's pray. Father God, we come before you and just thank you so much for what you do for our, 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 ask that you place your head protection around all the city employees and workers, fathers. Father, we also, uh, ask you to do the same with the school system as we do years ago. Father, we ask that you lead guidance and direction of thoughts and actions as you were part of this meeting. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Praise the Lord. To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item I have on this agenda is the approval of the agenda. The important change that, uh, we talked about in the work session, having, uh, having dialogue on the NDA parking in the new sector of our, of our station. If that changed, may, may, may I make a motion to approve this? A motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda, I have the approval of the minutes for our regular meeting and our work sessions. Are there a motion to approve of this?
Motion.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the carryover from a couple of meetings before is the ordinance twenty twenty-five national eight. This is, uh, the ordinance prohibit unsupervised minors under the age of fourteen to our city parks with the events that we have.
Mayor, could we at this time ask Chief Hodge to, to, to explain what's happened or add his thoughts on this ordinance?
If, uh, if I'm not mistaken, you brought this up to the need for our police. I'm sure we originally heard about the need for this, what was yours?
Yeah, um, if I need a microphone, let me know, I'm pretty loud, but, uh.
Probably we'd do best if you had the microphone.
All right.
If y'all here.
I'm not touching it, you know what happens when people touch, uh, James' microphone. Well, this, we started thinking about this after the, the concerns we had after the jamboree last year when we had all the kids behind the concession stand, had multiple fights. It, it was overwhelming, we didn't have the people to deal with it if we had a big problem. That concerned us. And then speaking with Seth recently after we had the, the problem at the, uh, when the movie was canceled, Kids Day vandalism occurred. We've had a bunch of incidents like that, the concern. My main concern and my job is to do all I can do to make the city safe and to make sure nothing bad happens. I see bad things all day, every day. I have a little different perspective than anybody else. I do though, appreciate the commentary that I heard after our first meeting. Some of the people that made statements here and then people that have called me in my office made a lot of sense. And then I suggested three modifications that I believe, uh, I said to Connie. And then I suggested three modifications that I believe, I said to Connie, and Connie has put in the current version because I thought some of the things that people said made good sense. Like one was if a young parent wants to take their child, you know, a parent that's under twenty-one wants to take their child to park, it's ridiculous to say that they can't take their child to park. That shouldn't have been in there. We based our initial document on documents that came from the Mobile area. In 2019, there was a shooting at a football game and ten people were shot, four critically injured, children were shot. That had a knee-jerk reaction in the Mobile area and a lot of those high schools down there adopted policies like the one we had that we read you first that were more strict than what we're looking at now. One thing I've heard from people is, well, you know, when I was a kid, it didn't happen. You're right, it didn't. I looked it up. Seventies, nothing like that ever happened. Eighties, virtually nothing. Nineties, virtually nothing. Two thousand to two thousand and ten, very small amount of problems at high school football events. It really took off around 2018. The number jumped up to twenty, which by today's standards is still a small number, but you had twenty in 2018 shooting incidents at high school athletic events. Twenty nineteen, you had twenty-six. Twenty twenty was a anomaly. You only had eleven, but then 2021, you get thirty-eight. Twenty twenty-two, there were fifty-nine. Twenty twenty-three, there were sixty-four. Now, the data that I got from this story stopped the first month in the last year. By the end of September last year, there were already twenty-four shootings at high school events, football, basketball games. Just sporting events only. Now, if you look at all school-related shootings, it's up in the three-thirties to three-hundred-and-forty range. But just for athletic events, the number has climbed exponentially in the last few years, and that concerns me. The advent of the Glock switch and kids having them bothers me. Twelve hundred rounds a minute capability, that scares me. I don't want to not say what I'm concerned about and then have something bad happen. If we have a shooting at one of our high school football games, I'm going to be the one under the microscope looked at. I'm going to be the one that's going to take the blame for it, you know, why we didn't try everything. So I appreciate everybody's point of view on this. I'm giving you mine. The other point of views makes sense. Seth has said repeatedly, Seth's not here, I call him. Seth has said repeatedly, as have other people, that it's not fair to the people who do things the right way for a few people to ruin it. It's not fair. That's absolutely correct, and I agree with them one hundred percent. But having just hordes of kids left after the games, going outside by the library, we've had some big fights, you know, having hordes of kids that we can't handle inside the games, that's my biggest concern. Calvin brought up with me the possibility of weapons detection at the games. That's something we could certainly talk about. We have the capability. We don't have enough. We have one machine. We would need at least two to do that, but that's something we certainly can talk about if you guys are interested in it. But I looked at the news this morning, and I want to point something out to you that's a little alarming to me. Football season hasn't even started yet. It's just jamborees going on, and we've already had two shootings. And most of these shootings happen in the southeastern United States. But this past Saturday, before the actual season has started, there were two separate shootings after high school football games in the parking lot. One was in Orlando. Three people were shot and one died. Four juveniles were arrested for the shooting. And then on the same day, in Raleigh, North Carolina, there were multiple fights inside the venue. The game was stopped. It was a seventeen jamboree. They shut it down. And then they had to call over forty police units to deal with the problem in the parking lot. Shots were fired, and thankfully there, nobody was hit. But forty units had to respond. I'm assuming this is a much bigger school. I don't know. I don't know anything about the school. But those are my concerns. But again, very good points were made, and I rethought, you know, my original ideas, and it made a lot of sense. And I think that having these hearings and talking about it is good for us, too, because, you know, what the citizens want and what you guys decide, we're going to, we're going to act on. I'm just giving you my opinion, and look, mine comes from thirty-four years of seeing the worst of the worst of society. So I am always fearful of something happening. So that's, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but that's my point of view on the ordinance, and that's our reason. I don't want to, I don't want us to be like the Mobile area schools and react to ten kids shot and then pass an ordinance. I'd rather do something ahead of time and be proactive. And this may not be the best method. There may be something better, you know, I don't know. I'm open to listening.
So Chief, let me ask you this. Ninety percent of what you pretty much explained to us just now was pertaining to shooting. None of us want that to happen. But I guess when you look at the ordinance that's at hand, we need to sound like we just thought we need to put something in place for not to be able to bring these weapons into a game, which is the more dangerous than it is the issue of fighting inside the park, based on the data that we just heard from you.
But I will tell you with one of these instances is there were fights inside, well, both of these, there were fights inside the park. Everybody was asked to leave. Kids went out to their cars. That's when the gunshots happened in the parking lot, both of these instances. So neither one of these were inside the stadium. Just for a little clarification on that.
Well, Chief, with the use of these devices to check the weapons, would that totally eliminate your concerns for unsupervised children under the age of fourteen?
No. We don't want to have to deal with a fight with twenty-five or thirty kids either and, you know, have kids hurt. That's a concern that I also have. Now, it would alleviate my main concern, which is somebody being shot, but again, you know, if we get kids, if kids are staying out in the parking lot or we have to throw kids out and their, you know, their parents aren't going to come pick them up and they're going to be loitering out there in the parking lot, they may go to a car and get a gun. That's what happened, you know, this weekend in two different southeastern cities. I didn't check to see if they had metal detectors at these games. I don't know if they did or not, but that'd be something I'd be interested in seeing since the shootings. Fighting's hap, fighting happened inside the stadium. They shut the game down. The shootings were outside the stadium in both of these cases.
So where this data that you're producing now, was that like local around within our boundaries here, like here, like this was pertaining to, like you said, down in Mobile?
Well, Mobile was the twenty nineteen where ten kids were shot. That was when these ordinance really started. Now, Birmingham already had this going on. You know, Birmingham, you can't go to the other team's sideline. They got metal detectors. They've been doing that for years. Some Birmingham schools have Saturday games because they didn't want to have them on Friday night anymore, you know? And that's, that's something that's common around the country. These two incidents, I'm talking about, one was in Orlando and one was in Raleigh this weekend. That's where they were.
So I have a question to you. Do we have a plan? How are we going to gauge children coming into the gate if they're not with their parents?
Well, most of the time, our SROs are going to know our kids. And if kids are coming from the visiting side, they're going to have somebody drive them. But, but that's what, that's what we're planning to do. And again, we don't want to stop people from having fun. I mean, another concern I have is, you know, I hate that we lock the playground. Kids ought to be able to play back there. And if we could find somebody that would be willing to stand there at the gate and only let children go on the playground, I think that would be great. I don't have the personnel to do that, but if somebody wanted to do that, I think that would be fine. But if we just leave that unlocked, we got that whole area back there open behind the concession stand where, you know, kids are going to go and bad things are going to happen. But if we have somebody, you know, I've seen a lot of stuff on social media where people offering to volunteer. That'd be great. If somebody will take responsibility and stand there at that gate and let only people with small children go and play on the playground, I think that would be wonderful. I think it's a shame for the playground not to be able to be used.
This is a public hearing on this. So is anybody from the crowd out here that wants to speak about that ordinance? Do they have a?
Good evening. Jennifer Illinois, Kensington Place. The ordinance itself, instead of doing that, as far as it goes for the businesses themselves, they need to put it in place where an adult needs to accompany the children. Also, what Chief is saying, we have, if you do a task force or volunteers for some vets and elderly, moms, dads from the school, I guarantee you, this ordinance would not be necessary. Also, yes, I do want us to be protected. That is a good idea of having the metal detectors because we are no conceal, well, concealed free now. You can walk around with your gun, and yes, we do need that protection. But before you place that, and I know it's worked in some areas, try to at least work with the parents, work with the kids, because we are willing to do that if we know that we can come together as a team and do so. Know when we need to be there, know what needs to be done, and actually authorize certain people, like, I want to say, yep, you guys? Under the case program is what I actually said. Put another title on the case program for specific adults that have been vetted, and they can have specific T-shirts or something to identify themselves as that specific type of person in these areas for our children. Kind of like Safe Place. I don't know if the fire department still has the Safe Place in St. John's. That would help because we're growing and we have a lot of kids. I was out there Saturday. So yes, they need something. I didn't know the playground was locked, and that's probably why they were running around. They needed to run. But before y'all put that in place, make sure you know that there are other options before you do that.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask you a question? On this ordinance, could we put a timeframe on it and readdress it? Say we could put three months or a year, just come back and readdress this and see if there are changes that need to be loosened or tightened on it?
Any ordinance can be revisited at any given time. It can be amended, changed, added to. Any, any of this council will inform. Have reason to change an ordinance, any ordinance.
Good afternoon. Daniel, how's it going?
Yes.
All right, so I've told this, I've said this before. Probably being an outsider, it's, it's hard to hear a small city deal with this problem. In Los Angeles, we have a curfew. Chief, I think a curfew would be great because it gives us parents the responsibility to get our kids to the park and back home. If, we're not going to be able to control the guns. We're not. I mean, you tell a grown adult, don't text and drive. We're still texting and driving. You tell the grown adult, be on time at work, and he's still going to be late. If you're trying to fight a problem with young kids, guns and fights, the biggest, the first thing we've got to do is give more, more help to the schools. So every time we host a game, there's, there's a budget. Police department should not be accountable for babysitting kids, grown men, grown kids that can make that decision. So the school has the funding so we can have some type of security. It would help take the pressure off the police department. We're not here. Like, I'm an adult and I still, the speed limit says forty-five, and I'm still going[1439.13] to forty-eight. I'm not taking no chances. You talk to kids, "There is no dang way in hell you're going to make a child think, 'Well, I'm cool, I have a gun, I'm going to take you to the park and I'm going to show my friends.'" But what happens when that gentleman pulls a gun out and a friend behind them says, "Boom!" The trigger gets fired. Someone's going to be killed. There's no ifs and buts. There's so many yes, nos, maybes. The thing is, give the schools financial help. Have security there. Eliminate the responsibility off the police department. Let's take accountability for the money that the city makes and use it to protect not just the parents, grandparents, but our youth. I mean, you've got kids gangbanging in California and Birmingham from fourteen years old and you have here the county and we're worried about it, but he wants to stay ahead of the game. That is the only way to get ahead of the game. Make the parents accountable. Put a curfew on it. Start issuing citations. What's your name? David Morales, whatever. While you're here up until nine-thirty. It's weekday, my kids go to sleep by eight-thirty. There's no reason, my kids, grown man over there, my kids, if you're not home by nine o'clock and you've got a driver's license, you don't come home. Find somewhere else to move because this is my rules. So if, if we focus on being a little harder on parents, I think we can build ourselves, push ourselves to have more responsibility towards our kids. Sorry. Thank you.
Good evening. How is everyone?
Good.
Good.
Great.
Y'all know I love all of you all. I really do. I'm here to talk about that situation as well. I talked about it before. And Chief, I totally agree with some of the things that you are suggesting. I agree with some of the things that you're suggesting. Some of the things that you are suggesting as well. I agree with some of them. Making the parents accountable, I totally agree with that. Again, I said once before, if there's anything that I can do, because I grew up in the seventies where we didn't have this problem. If kids got in a fight and it was a fistfight, you were done and then you're off playing again. And nobody knew about it except the little kids that were around them and that was it. But my thing is nowadays, like you're saying, everybody's carrying a gun. For what? You're at an event. You're at a public place. What is the gun for? Regardless of whether we have open carry or not, there should be no reason why all of these officers of the law should be there to supervise or anything. We should only have maybe two that are at the parks. I totally agree with making the parents accountable. Anyone that's caught with a weapon, that parent is held responsible. When you start hitting that pocket, that makes the, makes the money go around. When you start hitting that pocket, guess what? Things start changing. But if you have people like me, parents, I have three children that I have raised and like I told you before, the only thing that I got, I got on to my oldest son about was he, he glued pennies on some of the teachers' doors that he did not like. I got on to him before they could even say anything to me about it. I didn't care what. Corporal discipline is what I perform. My thing is, if, if these parents don't want outsiders talking to their children, you've got to handle your child. Because my thing is, if I come to help, I'm going to say something. I'm not going to say it in a manner that they won't be, you know, they, they won't be, uh, what is the word I'm looking for? They won't be so offended to what I say because I'm going to treat them accordingly. Now, if you come into my space and you're acting like you're my age, which I'm sixty, if you're acting my age, I'm going to treat you like you're my age and I'm going to speak to you like you're my age. But majority of the children, they want to try to be grown and do grown-up things, but when you give them the grown-up situations and, and the grown-up responsibilities of taking accountability for their actions, then guess what? They don't want to be grown anymore. Because if you give them that option of, okay, if you bring this gun, guess what? You're going to go to jail and your parent is going to get fined for it. That's going to make the parents get up, recognize that you don't need to leave your children like this. But I will help if it means that I go out and sit and supervise the little kids that want to go to the park or want to go in the playground area. I gladly do it. Just let me know ahead of time because I love to travel.
Thank you. Anybody else? We're going to keep this on three minutes.
I just want to say one thing. Uh, my name is Shakiri and my friend is Kensington Bolivar. I do agree with the chief. I work, I'm from Birmingham, so I do know the violence there is terrible, but I stayed here. Clearly, I've been there about seven years. Also work for children for a while, so I see the kids that come in that have the gun violence. And I also agree with the people that just spoke before. If you start holding these parents accountable, I tell my kids, I got two kids, I got a twelve-year-old son, um, you can't do whatever you want in my household because when you get in the real world, you can't do whatever you want. So you start holding them accountable.
I think this is, Chief.
Okay. The problem with holding the parents responsible is we're at the mercy of our juvenile justice system and the kids have absolutely no fear of the juvenile justice system. So if we arrest a kid at the park that's got a gun, the parents are not going to be fined. The kid's not going to more than likely be in jail very long. They have absolutely no fear of the juvenile justice system. They really don't have a whole lot of fear of the adult justice system either. So, and you're, and people keep talking about holding the parents accountable. That's great for you guys, but there's a lot of parents out there that do not care. They don't care what their kids do and we deal with those parents every day. The kids do something wrong, we arrest them, the parents are mad at us. It's our fault, it's the school's fault, it's everybody else's fault. So those are the ones we have a problem with. If everybody was like you ladies and gentlemen, we wouldn't have a problem. But it's, you know, it's those parents that we have to deal with that take no responsibility for anything. But again, it would be nice if we could hit the pocketbook of the parents. That ain't going to happen. I'm just being real with you. When they go to juvenile justice system here, it's a cave walk. It ain't scary enough.
Is it this ordinance putting some accountability on that parent because it states that they would need to be supervised?
Yeah, I mean, we, we're, we don't want to allow groups of unsupervised kids to come because, I mean, sometimes the parents aren't even picking them up after the game. I mean, our librarian can tell you that. She's, she and I have talked about that before, but you have big groups of kids hanging out for who knows how long after the game. Nobody picks them up and they, they're just out there in our park. Uh, I think we're going to add to our patrol a little bit. Um, I believe Mr. Hidalgo said, "Two officers, we're, we're up to ten and probably will have more this year." And things went pretty smooth last year and the fence looks nice. We went out there and looked at it and the fence looks good. That's going to be a great help. But we're going to put our side-by-side in the parking lot. Uh, we're going to put that camera out there. We're going to have our drone in the parking lot. So we're worried about the parking lots just about as much as we are the game. And when we do turn these kids away, who's going to come pick them up? You know, they're going to be in the park, but we're going to try to contact the parents and hold the parents accountable. But I'm just, to be honest with you, sometimes we ain't going to be able to get in touch with them and sometimes if we do, they, they still not going to come pick the kids up. That's just the world we live in, unfortunately. I wish everybody were like, like you guys.
Anybody else? You've already been up. We're not repeating.
Great, no, no, great suggestion.
Yeah, you've already been up. Have a seat. Anybody else? At this time of closing this public hearing, this time the council can discuss any of the, uh, ordinance that we have there. Comfortable with it?
I'd just like to say that, uh, once again, the, uh, this ordinance talks about fourteen and a half, about thirteen-year-old, twelve-year-old, eleven-year-old possibly, uh, need to be supervised after a football game or a, or major event, which probably will be ten o'clock anyway. And I don't know, I don't know why it's so difficult to understand that, that we're talking about giving responsibility to the parents. Uh, this, if the responsibility to the parents, if you want your eleven-year-olds, your twelve-year-olds, your thirteen-year-olds out after, after the major event, then you need to be out there to supervise or have someone of age that, that would be responsible to supervise them. So, uh, I think, uh, if we, if, if, no, it's kind of under counsel, I'm going to put a motion on the floor.
You got a motion?
A second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Those like that. Next item on the agenda is ordinance twenty-five dash ten. Provides a tax on fake products. Heard about this in the previous meeting. Heard some suggestions. I think Kelly has some information for you. Um, it was talked about the percentage, is that correct? The council have a, have a percentage to put into that.
I reckon, I think we'll go to state and we'll use a nice ten percent.
That's a suggestion. I think once we set a percentage according to the law, the legislature put in place, it sticks with that percentage from here on. We can, we can come back and raise that. Any discussion on that?
No discussion, I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Resolution twenty-two five dash forty-three is our, we built out an act of plan. Bill's put that together for you. Any discussion on that plan as it's settled down?
Is that all?
Out of this budget, for the next year's budget?
Next year.
It's going forward. Will the second ever just please wait? Keep seeing those. We've got a little bit of tax for it. Are you with discussion on it?
I just wanted, I guess that they had asked a question, but the five hundred thousand bill adds in and that's, that's already there, Kelly?
It is. It's there spread amongst all our different gas tax funds. We don't receive that much in a year, but we, it, um, paving projects are expensive.
So that'd be moving forward now then, right, Bill? Though, I mean, those, those are, once it's passed, the money's there, so you'll start those projects.
Yeah, I'll advertise, I'll probably advertise first of September. That way we can award early October to start them, yeah.
There's nothing scheduled for the rest of today.
Who want to make this motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Resolution twenty-two five dash forty-two is Grant Management LLC. It's our con, our contract for comprehensive grant writing. This is with Kara. Kara's done a really good job of getting this funding secured. You have some questions?
No, I was just going to say, if, if we go with Kara like, like she's done it, she has done a great job, then she is giving us, if we read over, she's giving us a, a huge discount if we can get the funds available to her on Section 130.
We always pay her before the end of the year. Yes, she gives us that discount every year, so we've got, we've got what we're going to pay her for this year, so that will be for next year.
Do they hear a motion? Do they want that?
I'll make a motion. I'll say.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. We have a proclamation celebrating the one-hundred-and-fifty-sixth anniversary of our first Baptist church in Clearup. Okay, we did the proclamation. Did you present that to the church?
I did and they, they were excited and very appreciative and they look forward to, um, working and helping out Main Street as always.
That's good stuff. Good recognition there. We appreciate them, everybody that's involved in the history of our church and our citizens. We're here to support you. We really appreciate you. Want to make a motion on this proclamation?
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-two five dash forty-four, Surplus Islands, I think that'll be, uh, agenda here for my team, old inventory. Get a list of that stuff. Do they hear a motion to approve that?
A second.
Get a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chief, you backed up for swearing in with a new officer.
We always tell them to get a discussion. Somebody told me you don't have to yet. Okay. You don't have to. Raise your hand, put your left hand in the balance, repeat after me. On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others.
To hold myself and others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
I will always uphold the Constitution.
My community.
My community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I always like to read Bible verse and we had two officers killed today in line of duty in Utah and, uh, this is my favorite Bible verse that I think pertains to law enforcement. "This is my command, love one another as I have loved you. No one has had greater love than this, to lay down his life for his friends." John fifteen, twelve, thirteen. Resolution, good, wonderful.
All right, next item on the agenda is resolution twenty-two five dash forty-five is the City Clearup Police Department, uh, classification plan. Maybe it's a mess to, uh, try to differentiate the classifications of employees. Any discussion on those two in the classification plan? This is an item that we, would they be known as consent homes? Any discussion on that? In four.
Can I ask someone just to call?
I would like to explain it. In twenty-twenty-two, when the PACE study was done, it was, the fire department came under their own classification of service and everybody else went under general. And I feel like the police need to have their own classification like the fire department does, so it's easier to manage.
Anybody want? Have any discussion on that? It's only in the consideration. I think the, the zero, what are the classifications you have in the?
I read right out and when I did, it's all moved down from a G, whatever, high grade they were to P and the money is the same. It's just given in the whole scale.
Any more discussion on that?
Chief.
Yes.
As far as this scale, you have gone over and you did.
One of the scale that I gave you guys the other day was a twelve percent increase across the board. Is that what we're talking about?
No, this is the scale, this is, this is the same as what we're seeing in twenty-twenty-two.
Okay.
When the fire department was filled out of it, instead of classifying the police under general, it's classing you as under your police scale. It's the same numbers, no numbers have changed, but this is just giving them a different label in the deal.
Okay.
So basically, you're dealing with the classification more so than?
Yes, that is. Cannot just the classification, yes.
Chief, are you, are you familiar with what's taking place? We want to make sure because we don't want this to get mixed up. We want to make sure we're all on the same page.
No, honestly, I thought you were going on what I submitted to you. That, that was my fault, but that's what this was.
That's what I thought you was saying.
I'm sorry. Okay, no, I mean, if she has to do this first, that, that makes, I didn't know that, that's fine.
Like the classification, the first, um, for an officer. Was a, was a ten. There were other jobs that were a G-ten. So if you didn't even adjust that in G-ten, it affected everybody in G-ten.
Sure.
So I have to make you a P-ten, so you're the only one in that.
Yeah, you had people in other departments who were also G-ten, so you're just changing the letter G to the letter P.
But you're the only ones in that scale now.
The, the P scale. Just like the fire, same thing.
Sounds so simple just to change a, a letter where we can code it. That's what takes place. That's what needs to take place at this point. You want to understand? Any discussion? We will send something back.
I was just going to ask, this is necessary, you know, in order to move to the next step in the budget discussions, right? This is, they need to have their own classification.
If you did, anything in the, in the going forward, um, this is just one, one procedure that would need to take place.
No.
Get to that point.
I was thinking, okay.
Any more discussion? You can have a second reading of this or you can vote to suspend the rules, you know, the consent, you can move forward with the majority.
I suggest that we go ahead and move on it.
I'll say.
I'll move for unanimous consent.
Got a motion for unanimous consent?
A second.
In a second. They have roll call vote, attorneys?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Yes.
So we guess?
Yes.
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 We have unanimous consent. All in favor? I need a motion to, to, uh, adopt this.
I move.
I'll say.
Got a motion? All in, motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If that's taken care of all that. Kelly, you have, uh, budget adjustments on the council agenda? Any discussion on those budget adjustments? Do you have a question? I need a motion to adopt Kelly's budget adjustments.
I'll make a motion. I'll say.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Yes, sir, we've removed that.
Next, I have, uh, a note here for the ADA parking in the new parking lot. You heard Roger talking about getting on that. Kelly's concern was that being paid for under this current budget.
What is that amount?
Three thousand.
Three thousand. Okay, you're just shopping the budget adjustment.
Come back to you as a budget adjustment at the next meeting, so. We heard about the request. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um, excuse me. On the agenda, if you go back down, it said the classification and then it said the pay scale? I mean, you did the classification. So that's one of the things, so you were not supposed to vote on a pay scale.
All right, Kevin, you got?
Okay.
Recognition of a special long-term employee for the City of Clearup.
Come on, Tim. I don't think I have to tell anybody here who this is. Um, I'm about to say something I didn't think I was gonna say, well, I didn't think I was ever gonna say, but. No, keep it short and sweet, just like you told us to. Tammy Smith is retired from the city of Clearup after twenty-eight years?
Twenty, almost twenty-six years, thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. I don't have to tell y'all how old she is at that time. The woman had her own parade. She announced she was retired, so. I hope you're enjoying your retirement.
I am definitely enjoying retirement. I love work, but I love retirement.
She's got a new great-grandbaby to take care of, so that's her, that's her good job.
Thank you for your service.
Congratulations.
All right, next on the agenda, we have Reggie with the officials from one eighty-nine, Will and Doug.
Yes, our last attorney, Brian Kilgore. Uh, we got the new amendment, uh, or the new ordinance done with the new nuisance. The one eighty-nine, I'm sure everybody's familiar with, is eight foot tall, growed up, been like that for a long time. We can't find anybody to do anything. So before Ryan left, he sent an email last week and said that, uh, leave it up to us or leave it up to y'all. It's been started with the old ordinance, he said, we could go down there and cut it now. Uh, get the city to go there and cut it, or get a third party to cut it, cut it now. And assess the value of that and put a lien on the house. We just have to sue for it because it won't go like the new ordinance does, where it just goes straight to the tax assessor's when the taxes are paid. Next year, we get, the city gets paid. We can either go ahead and cut it now and get that out of the way, or he said, uh, if you didn't want to do that, start the new way we're doing things with the ordinance, start it back over, which would be, I'm not sure, we haven't never, we haven't done that one yet. So I don't know how, exactly how long it takes to go through it and get the process done. Uh, so we could either do it now, he said we could, the city could go in there or have it done now. Or wait a little bit longer and get it done the other way. So I was going to ask y'all which way.
You want to proceed with that?
Uh, I talked to, to Bill, I think he got a picture of it, looked at it, and he can.
Yeah, first time, probably our call, it depends on how you look at it. Loaded cost, probably about a thousand dollars to cut it the first time. And then thereafter, three to three fifty. Would be all loaded rate to cut it.
Have we made an attempt, I'm sure you have, to contact whoever owns that?
Several, this has been going on for a while.
Okay, can that go toward the new ordinance and we just, that contact?
We got to start it back over. What Ryan said. He said we can, since this has been started in the old ordinance, we could go there and cut it. The lien would be put, uh, on and you got to sue for that money or start it back over. Get that process done. And then when that process was done, like I said, I don't know exactly how long it takes. Uh, he said it's a lot quicker. Uh, but get that done and then we could, if we get the city, uh, we could do it, or we can go to third party, uh, get that done. And then when that is done, put the lien on it, put it into that, uh, tax assessor's office. And when the taxes are paid, uh, that next year, the city gets paid.
I think it's period, is that a rental house? Do we know if it's rental, we don't?
The last we found out, uh, the person that lived there, the man that owned it had died, I think the daughter had moved out, and we can't find anybody that will pick up a letter, find a letter. We've dug and dug, nothing. Can't get anybody to do anything. So this is one of the things that the new ordinance was doing, was just the problems that we had, some of the problems that, you know, people won't do anything or can't get in touch with them. The city can actually go down there and do something and it's not eight foot tall. With neighboring beside it where their grass is cut, it looks even worse. Uh, 'cause I get, there's a lady, one or two down there right now that calls me every week. And they're wondering, you know, what y'all are gonna do. I said, I'm gonna find out Monday night if we're gonna start it over or go ahead and do it, so.
So I think, I think we need to go ahead and do it. The reason I did, it's been going on for a very long time. And the pictures that I bought in, that I have here show the condition of that. And I talked to one of the neighbors this past week. And they want something done immediately.
Yeah, this was bad. I mean, I know y'all seen the pictures, this got worse since then. Bill's thinking, what'd you say, four? The first, first time.
This time, if we spend a thousand dollars to fix it, it's on a lien against the property. So when that property is sold, it might be five years, six years, or whatever, then the city will reclaim their money. The second time, the next time, will it fall under the, the new ordinance? If they don't cut it and it grows back up again.
Yes, it should, yes.
Can it fall under the new ordinance, which is not a lien?
Right.
This, this will be against the taxes. And when the taxes is paid on the property, we will receive our money for the second time.
Correct. Hopefully, if we get this, uh, and I don't, I don't know if somebody's gonna see it and wonder what happened and gonna start doing something or find out. I have no idea what, what's going on with the house, if you owns it. But I'm hoping that if they see it cut and find out there's a lien on the property, maybe they will start either sell the house or start keeping it up. But yes, after the next time, the lien would go, um, on the house and the tax assessor's.
A question for you, Kelly, why don't we don't code this out? Before we can keep up with it.
I would think we need to start a separate new GL line to keep up with this, if this is something we're gonna do on a recurring basis.
I like the new way of doing it. Lot more expedited and the end result seems like it pays quicker than us waiting on the house to have to sell. That's my caution, if we go through the initial lineup on it, chances are we won't see any return on that for a long time. The other way would be there are tax lien. It would be expedited a lot quicker.
That's right.
That's massive difference.
Well, I'd like to make a motion there.
That's the reason we have that new ordinance.
I'd like to make a motion for us to go ahead and fix this piece of property, clean it up at this time. And then we'll follow that up with a tax lien at the second time. I make a motion.
A second.
Got a motion in a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Reggie, back on the agenda with a twenty, ordinance twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash eleven. It's a supplemental, supplemental regulation change that I know we talked about. I think you talked about it in our work session.
I, I think so, well, I don't, I don't know what happened to it or what, but this is, uh, about, it's a wiring, it's called, we got copper wire, what everybody uses now, used to have aluminum back in the seventies. Then copper price has come down. Everybody's using copper now. There's a new, this product's been out for a long time. I don't know anybody that's using it. It's called copper clad, it's an aluminum wire that has a, uh, copper coating around it. It's got to be some special devices, uh, going to be a few more inspections we would have to do to make sure it's installed properly with the proper equipment. It's not as good as, I'm not gonna call it inferior product, but it's not as good as a copper product. There is some people that's wanting to use it here in our city. I've talked to several municipalities. Some of them have some ordinance already done like this, other ones have some places that, uh, a couple of them don't even, the people aren't even there, haven't pushed it there yet. But it's starting to be a push of a cheaper product going in these houses. It's just a lot of, it's not as, near as good a product as copper, it's a lot cheaper, and that's one reason people don't want to go to it. So the ordinance is gonna read that, um, anything under, well, anything for a distribution panel, it can be aluminum, which it can be now, copper clad, but anything in the house, wiring, as far as your plugs, your appliances and stuff, has to be copper. Cannot be aluminum for copper clad.
So how does the, our fire department feel about this, or they, they feel like this is not gonna cause any issue? Do with this aluminum wire, copper clad wire?
We use it for service cables, uh, as far as the wire on the inside of the house. If you, if you don't go with this amendment, then you could have a potential fires in a lot of areas at this time. My suggestion is go with this amendment here. I reviewed it from top to bottom, I've been building for forty years. I would not use it on the inside of any of my homes. Service cables, it's okay, but not inside my.
My understanding, it's a smaller gauge wire, there's a lot of problems with that.
It's actually a, they gotta make it a bigger wire because it doesn't have the opacity of it, so. I know you, some of you don't know about wiring, but, uh, just your kitchen plugs, they got a certain size wire, they gotta be, it's a number twelve. Uh, this wire, uh, has to be upsized, uh, to a number ten. And then there's some outlets that do not care, they make it special outlets that, well, not special, but they gotta make, we're gonna make sure that they do account for number ten, it's a lot bigger wire, a lot stiffer. Oxidation, corrosion, and humidity, wet places, uh, that's a big concern. So just most people that I've talked to are against it. I did talk to, uh, a fire marshal and we was discussing it. He didn't know a whole lot about it, but he said that he's heard about it before and he said, I, I wouldn't have it in my house. But this would just alleviate anybody trying to, to do it, sneak it in, or, or us going to a, uh, a cheaper product for the homeowners. Because the homeowners won't know that they have, if they come by a house at Timberline, uh, Camden Cove, anywhere like that right there that had it in there, they're buying the house and just everybody that I know of thinks they got copper wire. And they wouldn't know, because they're not gonna disclose that they got copper clad in there, because it's it's okay to go by the code. It's accepted by the code, but there's just different things you have to do and everybody goes for copper, it's a cheaper product.
This is on the agenda, I want to take action on it tonight, I need to, I need to make unanimous consent.
I'll move with unanimous consent.
A second.
Got a motion in a second, for unanimous consent, do I have a roll call table?
Yes.
Reggie?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yeah?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, oh, easy, now need a motion to adopt.
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Got a motion in a second to adopt, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Got any ready, supplemental ready, Reggie?
Thank you.
All right, I've got, um, the sign-in document back there and it's like we had guests, guests, want to make comments, Jennifer?
Good evening, Leah. First of all, I'd like to say, um, I was at Meet the Eagles on Saturday and I want to commend our first responders in the extreme heat that we were all in. We had, what I saw were a couple of emergencies and you all ran into helping and assisting. And Heather, thank you for the ice. I want to commend you all for assisting and all that you all do, trust me, we see you. I would, collect the, Meet the Eagles with the Rising Eagles, the booster that runs this with, in collaboration with the, um, Parks and Rec. Understanding that there was some, um, or, there an organization going on between the ticket booth and also the, um, the Pro's Nest, the announcers and all of that, especially when it comes to doing the campaign and also the advertisements and the announcements of the kids. Wanted to let you all know that, um, we, they need the help. They were by themselves and I only saw a few people from, uh, who two I thought were still with, um, the city, um, Park and Rec. And I saw the coaches, but for all of that to have happened, including the advertisements that were paid out, were not done properly. And one was myself, I paid three hundred and twenty-five dollars for campaigning and did not get that information until the day of and even ran up twice to try to get that done. So I would like to know that if it was done between the, the city itself, the Park and Rec, or the school? Anybody can answer? Or if you're not, you don't understand me, do I need to, but Seth is not here, so I would have to get with Seth. But I wanted to let you all know that even after all of that, where we didn't have a table, which I brought a table and a tent, just in case, that all was not provided for under the assumption that, that three twenty-five was supposed to help be a part of that. I'm just letting you know, that should have been a part of it and it wasn't. And even at the end, when I wanted to present my advertisement, um, yeah, it was shown. So just to bring that to your attention, that I am facing adversity with this campaign. And just to let you know that, uh, other people were noticing it as well. Thank you.
Kendra, what?
We're actually speaking together. Kind of just about the same thing.
Hey, I'm not gonna keep y'all long, my name is Takiere Mafree, I will be the next person, I'm in this business, Ms. Kendra. We stay in Kensington, um, South Division, and it's some land that you guys had, I guess gave, was gave to you guys in two thousand and fourteen. And we're just trying to see, one of your guys, what's your plans for that land? Kensington, Erin, Simone.
There's been a lot of discussion on that from your homeowner association, you get it? There's been a lot of discussion on that, from your homeowner association, you hear that?
Yes, from my understanding, um, you guys are going to put a park there, and then you guys want to give us the land back. So that's why I'm here, I don't know what's going on, so, that's all. I have two, when I purchased my home seven years ago, that land was there, and I bought my home, thinking it was gonna be like, uh, a neighborhood of the park, or something for us to do, when I was just laying there, and I was just having some home problems, I'm got kids walking around, you know, doing all kinds of things, so, you just wanna know what are we gonna do with that land? So it's acres, if you wanna give it back to Kensington, so we can get to put something there, or you guys? Yeah, yeah, we thought, it was some land, so, I don't know what the price was, but, as a parent, as a homeowner, I'm coming here to ask, what are we want to do with that land? Are you guys wanna put something there, or are you wanna give it back to us, and we'll have something there?
We don't have any plans for that at this time, um, immediate plans, I know at one time, discussion took place with Jennifer.
And what's that discussion?
Just, decided, I think you can get up there and find out what those discussions were, uh, I know that Paula was out there in her court.
Really?
She was having an attorney, your homeowner association attorney, draw up a plan, somebody's supposed to draw up a plan, submit that to the cities, which we've never seen, so.
So the city, from my understanding, the city wants to give us that land back, correct?
We, we would possibly consider that, um.
And if you guys, and if Kensington don't want the land back, are y'all planning to build parks? I heard like a park or something was getting naked, no?
We don't have definite plans for building a park, I've heard things like storm shelter, I've heard all, all kinds of ideas. At this time, we don't have anything definite that, that we were planning, because Jennifer asked us to give the property back to your homeowner association.
So Jennifer comes next week, or whenever the next meeting to propose a plan, we'll try to look over there and possibly give us that back?
That's, that's where we last stood, I think, according to the, the previous discussion.
Thank you.
Have, have a plan.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, Daniel, what's all good?
Make this really quick, first thing, uh, Ms. Michelle made a point a little while ago, why, why was the pay increase for the officers ignored? Uh, you guys said it's a general, you guys wanna separate that, so, which means we can't give them a raise, why? Because the whole city would get a raise? I mean, I think we're, we're getting along, and if, if you guys are trying to separate the police department with city workers, are we gonna back pay the officers for the, all this time that they're wasting on the, on the raise? So that's one. Uh, second, I'd like to ask the police department, if they can, uh, ask some investigations, I got some reports from the state, and a couple of the people on the house fire that we had, I'd like to see if we can get some answers on that. I would also like to, uh, I got callers, uh, asking me why there's individuals that sit in front of me that make phone calls to change zoning, when I can't get it zoned, or some other people can't get zoned without going through a bunch of paperwork. Those are the three things that I would like to ask, and getting on my subject, on my personal note, I would like to extend an invitation to everybody here in front of me, sitting in front of me, uh, to give me a, a formal apology, so my family and I can move forward, you guys have caused me a lot of money, this is the last six weeks, uh, throwing my name, defamating my name out there on social media. Uh, I made a, a remark last city council meeting, that I was gonna seek counsel to counter back into the city for the damages that you're causing me, but I am willing to not move forward, because I would like to squish, squash this, and just, I want a formal apology for, for the personal idea that, that you guys may have towards me, but with that apology, I would like for the cities to reconsider resigning Mr. Reggie. For seven years, he has been chasing me around, he has been blocking me, I want my power back at the Crow's Nest. No one's conducting any businesses there, he cut my power, I want my power back. And outside of that, the zoning department has insulted, has treated my wife with disrespect, not insulted, I'm sorry, disrespectful, and have eliminated, I know you're looking at the clock, please look at me for a second. I know that you're looking at, but you guys have done me for seven years wrong. Zoning department have closed my doors to open businesses. Anyone related that has family members sitting in that council should be dismissed off the city, because there's too many politics confusion here, there's too many family members tied in with everybody running, or in, in, sitting in those chairs. It's getting, it's getting old, and you guys need to make it right. Stop looking at the clock, man.
That's all I have on my agenda.